...lined up to speak this evening. So we'll start with Boyd Iverson, followed by Robert Rubin. Boyd.
I'm Boyd Iverson. My address in town at least is 1872 Willamette Street. That's actually a business address. I live out of town. And I'm just going to hit some high points of something I want to leave with the -- I don't know. Should actually mostly have copies of this because I faxed some stuff earlier, but I'm just making sure. I want to speak specifically on the EMX project. EMX project. Make some points, I guess, about the system itself. One thing important for me is I'm not against mass transit, per se. I think it's a good thing. We need it to service those that can't drive physically or other reasons or economically. My concern on this, and I'll be right up front, I do own two property. My mother owns a property and I own a property on West 11th, so there are some definite negative impacts to my property if this thing happens. But beyond that, I'm not going to talk about those things. There's more in there. So anyway, mass transit is a good thing, but -- and mass transit vision, I think, is also a good thing. My feeling, what we're having now on West 11th and Sixth Street, is more of an agenda than a vision, and that's where I come to disagree with it. One thing, it's a foregone conclusion, I think, through this process, that traffic is a bad thing. I don't agree with that. Accidents are a bad thing. Traffic is not a bad thing. If you look at Sixth, Seventh, and 11th Streets, the reason the businesses are there are because of traffic. They would not exist if there wasn't traffic there, and they would die if the traffic was taken away. You know, we're somewhat different. We have the downtown core, we have Valley River, but the small businesses have to basically be set up with a strip commercial or a traffic-type situation. So those businesses move there because they need the traffic. You know, business 101, real quickly. To be successful, a business, small business, needs four things. They need high numbers of people, good visibility, ease of access, and adequate parking. Businesses thrive and prosper when there's a high number of people passing by. If you take away these criteria, or limit any of them, then your consumer-based businesses fail, and this proposed plan will be taking away a number of the items that are critical for businesses to succeed. The other question is, are these bad streets? I don't consider them bad streets. I do consider them busy, but not bad. I haven't seen any analysis that shows me that there's too much traffic on West 11th. There's a lot of roads in a lot of places in the United States have a lot more traffic than West 11th does, and they continue to function adequately and well. You know, fact of the basis, if this, if the LTD proposal is, if you guys vote for it, it's going to kill jobs. It's going to kill businesses. That's not conjecture. That's just plain economics, period. If people can't buy, then businesses die, and I'm all done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Boy, that's quick.
It is quick. Robert Rubin is next, followed by Jim Thomas.
Good evening. Welcome to all my friends from LTD. I'm here representing a family that owns property on West 11th Street.
Would you identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Robert Rubin. I know it has to be very difficult for a municipality to turn down funds for a public project. However, when the project is not necessary, the plans are flawed, and the benefits to the community are not in balance with the costs, it makes it easier. We have bus service on West 11th. West 11th is not Franklin Boulevard. There's no Grand Destination heading west. Heineck's Hyundai is gone. So what is the problem LTD is trying to solve? We have projections and estimates, but they're just that. They're maybes, mites, and couldbe's. They're fantasies of the future. Right now, LTD has a money problem. They're cutting services. The proposed EMX has less stops further apart. Excuse me. It's more inconvenient for the riders. I've heard it said that the first priority of transit management is to protect their budget. There's proposed 20% to 25% cuts in service for the future of LTD. I want to tell you about the people I'm here representing. A family with two children came to Eugene, started cleaning and maintaining aquariums, finally opened a small storefront on West 11th. Husband, wife, two children, no other employees. Then they moved across the street to where they are now. They rented the present location on West 11th, the property that may be taken away from them, condemned and taken away for this flawed project. They expanded to the back of the building and opened a water garden. As other businesses moved out, they took over the building. Then they went deep in debt to purchase it. Then they remodeled it and built a wonderful, thriving business. Now they have more than 25 employees. They're again remodeling and beautifying. They're a Eugene family working hard to make ends meet. Three generations work at the store when the grandkids are there. The same as all the other West 11th business owners. They've been here supporting the city, supporting LTD, and it's not fair, these plans, because they don't benefit the greater good of the community. If the money wasn't being dangled in front of us, we wouldn't be discussing this big project. You have good bus service. These dedicated LTD people are doing a good job. We're all off-track on this, and it's really painful because it's wasting our time, because we can't run our businesses, because we have to appeal to you to cut this down now, before it even goes any further. Condemnation. Public benefit, yes. Bus line.
Thank you. Next is Jim Thomas, followed by Laurel Hales, it looks like.
Good evening. My name is Jim Thomas. I live in Eugene, and I'm here, I'm a pastor at Eugene Faith Center along West 13th. And I've been privileged to be part of the West Eugene Corridor Committee for three years now, and working alongside, mostly observing, but also participating in this process of evaluating what are some of the best alternatives for our public transportation in our city. I've watched and worked closely with the LTD staff to see their integrity, their vision. A lot of times, everybody agrees with the vision, but oftentimes, it affects my property, then it's a different matter. And I've just been convinced that, as I look at it, I care about what my grandchildren are going to be faced with maybe 20, 25 years from now. To me, it takes courage to be a visionary. It isn't just lack of substance. I think we vote for our leaders to be able to have vision and carry it out beyond what our own particular preferences really are. And they've, LTD's worked with us on 13th Street, which is a whole different kind of animal than West 11th. But we lost some curb cuts, some access, but they also creatively designed some brand-new ways of getting people in and out that were very, very satisfactory. So I would just like to commend the LTD staff, their vision, and their engineers, and just their heart and attitude to work with each person individually to make this work. I see that the BMX system is working well. I'm proud of our city, and what it's going to look like in the future is very, very important to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laurel Hales is next, followed by Kim Sawyer.
Hi, I'm Laurel Hales. I live in West Eugene, 1264 Dolores Court. It's off of Terry and Royal. I take the bus 41, 43 every day by choice. I actually have a car. I work downtown, and it's something that I do because I don't want to deal with the traffic and the parking downtown. But I have some serious concerns. I don't own a business down on 11th or any of the other West MX boulevards that they're looking at. So my interest is purely personal, and it's simply a matter of looking at the picture and seeing what they've got. I had some questions that I wanted to address regarding the West Eugene expansion specifically of MX. In order to have this, existing LTD bus service would need to be cut. That's a definite. It's been said in several of the meetings. They would have several main hubs, but the actual bus service on whatever route they take would be cut to make room for that MX system. And in order to have that MX system, a feeder bus route system needs to be in place to get people from the outlying areas to those hubs. They already have a problem with the bus system as it is, operating at a deficit. They are cutting routes. The 30 has been put into the 41, 43, and right at this point, we have what's past white-line standing, room only. Children with their parents holding them, people in wheelchairs not being able to get on, and this is not going to continue to get better. If they put an MX into any of those routes, they're going to cut bus systems out to make room for that, and then put a feeder bus system in place. But they can't afford the bus system that exists. And my question really is a matter of the operating costs to operate the LTD bus system, not the MX. I understand that they have the funds in place for the construction, but I have not heard an answer yet on how they are going to provide the funding to operate it on a long-term basis. And until that has been addressed, I don't think that a feasible system can actually even be implemented or evaluated. And until that happens, I am vehemently opposed. I think that they need to look at some alternatives and say, what can we do to work with the system as it is? Because an MX on West Eugene is not a viable alternative. As other folks have mentioned, it's going to kill those businesses that they are trying to promote, and most of the funds come from either the bus, the intake from the buses themselves, or payroll taxes. If those businesses shut down, your payroll taxes are gone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim Sawyer is next, followed by Roy Benson.
My name is Kim Sawyer. I live on Greenview Street in Eugene, Ward 5. I have a business on West 11th. My business could survive the construction and the building of the EMX, but there would be some hardships I could endure it. But in this whole process of speaking out against the EMX, I've met a lot of folks, some of the people that just spoke before me and some that will speak after. And I can tell you that there's all kinds of people. There's Democrats, Republicans, there's Conservatives, there's Liberals. We're all in favor of good public transportation, and I think we have good public transportation now. Spending $100 million is fiscally irresponsible, and as a small business owner, I and this other group of people are fiscally responsible. That's the one thing we really do have in common. And what I would implore you folks to do is to be fiscally responsible. Don't take out a second mortgage on a house that you know your kids or your grandkids will have to pay, because you'll be long gone. And that's what we're doing as a nation, that's what we're doing as a city. And what it takes is one person to say, no, thank you. This is fiscally irresponsible at this point in time, and send the money back. And that's what I'd like to see you do. I don't think that LTD is capable of running the bus system. They have now at a deficit. As a small business owner, I can't run my business at a deficit, and I think that an EMX bus running six times an hour when they can't service West 11th four times an hour now, I don't think it'll happen. So I just ask you to make a statement, leave a legacy of fiscal responsibility, and try to send the money back and give it back to the, apply it back to our national debt. Thanks.
Roy Benson is next, followed by Brent Woodrich.
Hi, my name is Roy Benson, 570 Fillmore. I have a business on West Sixth Street. I'm not anti-bus, I'm not anti-mass transit. My business won't be affected that much. A lot of good things have been said for people this year. I don't have anything to add to that, except for, the point hasn't been made for eminent domain, that this bus system is going to affect a lot of people, a lot of businesses, a lot of property owners. Eminent domain is, to my mind, is we're going to build a freeway, we're going to build something, we have one or two pieces of property that are in the way. For the good of the many, we need to use that piece of property. Right now, we've got hundreds of pieces of property that we're going to take from people. That's just abuse of power, if there's any power at all. I'd say a lot of good points have been made, and I said I'm not anti-mass transit. For you people, think about it. You've got a lot of information, you've been doing it for years, I'm sure. Do a fiscally responsible thing. Thank you.
Next is Brent Woodrich, followed by Bob Machi, hi. Machioni.
Hi, I'm Brent Woodrich, 2700 West 11th. I'm also about EMX. Basically, West 11th for 45 years that I've been alive has been an industrial park. An industrial park you need to pick up to get out to the industrial area to pick up your lumber and your, you know, and it's, I don't see anybody really using EMX to use it as going to the grocery store or picking up their lumber. And I'm also feeling that we're in a time right now financially where we've all had to tighten up our belts because of the finances, and especially the last, you know, five years, you know, we've all had troubles making end. So businesses are even, at the same time, have tightened up their belts trying just to make it. I feel that we need to think about it in good times when everything's looking accordingly, financially, and also when your schools are tumbling. And, you know, my child's school, they have a fundraiser about every other week, it seems like. So I'm okay with it, but at the same time, you know, there's some people who can't afford to play. So I just want you to think about, you know, people are having financial problems, businesses, people. I understand EMX is important, I agree with it, but we need it in the vital points of town, you know, getting out to Valley Rivers and getting out to one side of town to the other side of town. I understand, but I would think we would want to service residential areas, you know, more so getting people downtown, then disperse them out in the smaller buses instead of having a main-line situation like they have, like the MAX, you know. They have a system like EMX technically, but at the same time, it circulates through town. So, you know, you have to get there first to use it. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to try not to murder this. Bob?
It's Bob Mascheroni.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilman Chris Pryor, because they have met with West Eugene businesses outside of these arenas here to have some discussions about the EMX. There's a few things going on that are kind of disconcerting, as LTD, Tom Schwetz, Mark Vabora, or Andy Vabora and Mark Panghorn keep accusing West Eugene people of putting out misinformation. And we're not putting out misinformation. That's something that I take exception to. What's actually going on is LTD is not explaining to us how they're going to operate this system, even if they got it implemented. They were, their last budget cycle, they were $5 million short. This budget cycle, they're already $3.2 million short. They're cutting routes to implement EMX. Their own board members don't know that the gateway route, when it's in place, will cost $1 million a year to operate. They will tell you that there's no cost increase for EMX. That's misinformation. That's a transit system accounting over 20 years. That is not reality. That is not sound business practices. Okay? I actually saw a website that is the Transit Cooperative Research Program Report 90. You can all access that on the Internet like I did tonight. And if you go through, they have 26 case studies for BRT. Boston, Massachusetts, 3 million people. Charlotte, North Carolina, 1.4 million people. Cleveland, Ohio, 2 million people. Hartford, Connecticut, a metropolitan area, 800,000. Honolulu, a major destination, 900,000. Houston, Texas, 1.8 million people. LA, 9.6 million people. Miami, Florida, 2.3 million. New York, New York, 16 million people. And Eugene, Oregon, at 200,000. How the hell you think we're going to run this thing? Who do you think's going to pay for it? You have no urban basis to build this. It's a dream. It's a pipe dream. Okay? You don't have the funds to run the current bus system. There's going to be another 10% to 15% cut in services in the next year. Springfield will be told probably within six months they're going to lose bus routes after they got their gateway unit running. The reason we have bus cuts right now is because we have the university one, and it will be the most successful one, but the rest will not. And so at $1 million per route, you're going to run out of money.
I think the next one is Eli Meyer, followed by Brooke Edwards.
Thank you. I'm Eli Meyer. I'm in North Eugene, and I would like to speak about the MX as well. I am a public transportation rider, and I am in favor of the MX expansion, and I've, I guess I've not, I've lived in different cities around the US as well as abroad, and I only see benefits to expanding rapid transit. And I also know that the data that LTD put out shows that on a per- rider basis, the MX system is actually cheaper than regular bus service, so I think that's important to keep in mind, so in terms of operating costs. The other thing is, I've seen rapid transit corridors build up business and make property values much, much better, so, especially in the mid and long term. So I think that there's a lot of data out there showing those positive impacts. I'm a rider. I very rarely drive, and I take bus and bike everywhere that I can, and I have, I'd like to patronize businesses on West 11th, but I've found that I have not done that because of traffic, and it's a little bit inaccessible for biking, so, and the bus system is a little bit sporadic. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Brooke Edwards is next, followed by Elise Downing.
Good evening. My name is Brooke Edwards. I'm a resident of Eugene, and I too wish to express support for MX, also as a public transportation user. And I guess I could raise a lot of points, but just a few I want to bring up. One is, I understand people's concerns, but I don't know if there's really any concrete evidence of this type of project killing business and hurting them. And I actually would like to raise an alternative perspective, that I think people avoid West 11th due to the traffic problems. I know I do. And I know that a lot of people I talk to, it seems to be pretty firm agreement that traffic is a problem that way and could be helped by offering some more feasible transportation options, something like MX that travels on a very regular basis. You don't need a bus schedule to see what time is coming, so it's very accessible. I too just want to raise the point, thinking about the long-term sustainability of our city. I think that this is one piece of a larger system that we'd like to see implemented. And in order for the system to work well and truly offer a sustainable option for transportation, then we need to piece together the whole system. It won't work if we just have little pieces here and there. And I'll just stop there, but I just want to express my support of the project.
Thank you. Elise Downing is next, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
Hi, I'm Elise Downing, a resident in Ward 3. I'm also a student at the University of Oregon and a member of the Climate Justice League there. I grew up in Portland, Oregon, and I do not have a driver's license because I've never needed one. I think that a high-functioning and accessible public transit system can change the culture of a city and solve problems like road congestion, CO2 emissions, and environmental degradation. Expanding the MX is a way to do all these things, using mainly federal funds that we can't use to fund the daily running of LTD. Doing this in a time when local tax income is low and routes are being cut is fiscally responsible in the very, if we look at it in the long term, this is not an opportunity that will always be available to us. This project allows LTD to cut routes and costs while maintaining service to West Eugene. Furthermore, it's a step to change the car culture of American cities with thoughtful city planning for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen is next, followed by Rachel Litten.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen, and I live in the downtown core. And I came tonight once again to talk about downtown safety. It's been two weeks since our last talk, and I've had a really interesting two weeks. The first thing I came upon was, two Saturdays ago, at 8:00, I went down for a donut and walked down a nice gauntlet of spandurs and drug dealers. It was nice to get to Broadway and have someone calling out, $2 joints, $2. Someone else had some E, although they weren't advertising the price, but as I passed, they did mention they had E if I was looking for it. That's ecstasy. And it's a nice little spot to walk down, and it was kind of scary and dark and creepy. And so I walked a different route back, but there were other problems down on 10th Street, too. Namely, lately since the construction's begun there, you can't get by on the sidewalk anymore because the crowd that hangs out near the bus station with the Wacken Hut guys kind of standing around just watching them. I guess their jurisdiction ends at the white line, so they don't have to ask people to, allow people to pass on the sidewalk. Also, the little crowd of dealers down there has moved over to Willamette Street, and they like to hang around by LCC, making it pretty close to impossible to get through there. And the, have also taken to panhandling in front of the senior disabled services building, which in a way, if you're panhandling in front of the senior disabled services, you're targeting seniors and disabled. And with a couple dogs and backpacks and their feet out in the street, well, you're not going to really get by with a walker or a wheelchair for the people who actually need those services. Kind of a little unfair, since they really don't have money, but they're kind of vulnerable. The other incident, too, I've noticed, this last Monday at 7:00 at night on Olive and Broadway, there was a large group, several groups there, panhandling, and a guy who was calling out that he was selling Vicodin, Xanax, and something in grams, which the two gals with the baby kind of rolled by and went in another direction. I walked by, but the kids begging on the street there got up and started counting their money to see if they had enough to get the stuff from him. 20 minutes later, they weren't there, and neither was he, so I imagine they all got cleared out and got what they wanted, and new group was up there collecting money for drugs. Today at 5:00, there was a guy there with a sign openly asking for money for drugs, because he wanted some fresh nugs. And that was really nice. And if you think it goes away with the rain, well, guess what? Take a walk down Broadway tonight. Why don't you bring your kids, maybe grandkids, maybe your spouses? It's still early in family hour. None of this helps the businesses. The downtown is continuing to hemorrhage businesses. I know of four that have closed. The Good News Shop is closing. There's, the Broadway has left, and a couple others, a gallery and a clothing shop have left the downtown. So I don't see how you expect this to work without police.
Thank you. Rachel Litten is next, followed by Andy Vabora.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Litten. I'm a resident of Eugene for 14 years, and I live in Ward 3. Excuse me. I'm a student at the University of Oregon as well. I'm a part of the Climate Justice League, a student group on campus, really focused on sustainability and things like that. So I wanted to bring a student perspective to the MX on the route through West 11th. As a student, I only commute via bike and via walking. I don't own a car. All my 14 years in Eugene, I've always bussed everywhere. When I attended Roosevelt Middle School and South Eugene High School, I bussed every day, twice a day to and from. I love the LTD system. Even without the MX system, it was great. The MX system makes my life so much easier on the University of Oregon campus. Just commuting downtown is great. I hardly ever get to go out to the West 11th campus, or the West 11th area, because it's hard for me to schedule my time around those bus routes, because they are, in fact, sporadic. I've seen and experienced the efficiency of the MX route on Franklin Boulevard, and I would love to see if it expanded, for so many reasons, to the West 11th area. One thing that does concern me, though I fully support expanding MX out to One thing that does concern me, though I fully support expanding MX out to West 11th for a lot of good reasons, one thing that does concern me, I'm an environmentalist major and some of the opposition points bring up that perhaps the wetlands would be affected and maybe also some old trees that are historically important to Eugene. I'd like to see perhaps some focus on that and see what LTD's response to that. I did a lot of research and LTD doesn't point out anything that has to do with wetlands, though the opposition also doesn't go into great detail. Since I'm very concerned about that issue, I would love to see more information on that and a little more research on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy Baborah is next with, and then my friend Joseph ZDZ.
Andy Baborah, Lane Transit District. Mayor Pearson, council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide some information on a question that has caused some level of confusion. The subject is the effectiveness of hybrid buses. Information circulated stating that LTD's hybrid MX buses are not green because they don't achieve the same fuel efficiency as LTD's other diesel buses. And generally, hybrid buses are not a good investment because they haven't achieved this expected fuel efficiency gain. Well, that's not true. And while it is true that MX bus fuel economy is less than other buses in the fleet, simply stating this as a fact ignores the bus characteristics that create those differences. MX vehicles are larger, they are heavier vehicles, and so comparing these buses with a lighter 40-foot or even a 60-foot standard LTD bus is not really a valid comparison. Additionally, there isn't another hybrid bus in the LTD fleet that really can be compared to an MX bus because it's so unique. At the present, LTD does have one other hybrid series vehicle and this bus does allow some level of comparison. The district has 15 60-foot buses in its fleet. Ten of these are hybrid electric vehicles, five are standard diesel vehicles. And these are similar enough that comparisons can be made in a kind of a head-to-head comparison. The result is fuel efficiency gains of 17 percent. That's well within the industry standard of what they say is expected to be 10 to 25 percent increase in fuel efficiency. So this level of improvement does reduce operating costs due to fewer gallons of diesel fuel being burned annually and means fewer emissions affecting our air quality. LTD anticipates operating costs to be reduced further as the district adds more hybrid buses to its fleet next year. But fuel efficiency alone is not the only criteria by which to judge whether a hybrid is a good investment. Industry tests show, and with our limited experience, we're starting to see this as well, reduced brake wear, increased oil life, and the potential for decreased engine and transmission wear, all benefits of hybrid technology. Innovation continues to drive newer and better technologies and those will improve our air quality and reduce our dependence on fossil fuel. So don't be surprised within the next decade if we do see hybrid propulsion systems replaced with all-electric propulsion systems. But until these technologies are proven, we believe that our experience with hybrid buses is showing that they are positive and they are good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph, you're next, followed by Charles Hibbert. I know you can say it. He saves me the struggling through it, I appreciate it, but he'll say it for us.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Sheckel-Szynicki. I live at 1025 Taylor Street, Ward One. Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff, audience, LTD staff. Here to talk about West 11th. I hope this ends soon so I can come here and talk to you about some other issues. It's getting old, four years of this. The West Eugene Collaborative, when it started, it, for their vision, they forgot to talk to the owners of businesses and properties and any residents on West 11th to find out what their historical perspective on the road is. They forgot to ask them what the future, what they plan on doing in the future, what kind of heirs they have. And so, you know, the WEC comes out with this grand vision of a multi-use boulevard without any input from the people that actually do business there or own land there. LTD's doing the same exact thing. Rather than talking to the people that live there that have to put up with the traffic for their businesses to succeed, for the property owners, they went ahead and worked on a solution. At their last LTD board meeting, which was last week, last Wednesday, no, last Monday, a week ago, several of the commissioners had been to different workshops and they all came out with this thing, saying, well, three of them came out, not all of them, came out, "Oh, you know, we've been focusing more on the solution and explaining that to the people rather than explaining the problem." And that's what we've been talking about for four years. Where is this need? LTD has not been providing the reason for doing this. Okay? So now, we have a real problem. None of, none of the businesses were contacted about the WEC. You know, you have these businesses that are opposing it here. Most of them didn't even know about the WEC. Okay? Yet there's this multi-plan for rezoning the whole area. So now you have, nobody's approached these possibly displaced businesses in the beginning of their evaluation process of the West 11th corridor. Why? Isn't that backwards? Why not first talk to their businesses on West 6th, 7th, 11th, and 13th? And if they are displaced, this is the main question, where in Eugene do you want these car-oriented businesses? You really have to start thinking about your zoning issues because you, this is bring about rezoning. So where do you want these businesses? Where do you want the furniture stores? Where do you want the body repair shop? Where do you want the paint stores? Where do you want the home improvement centers? That issue has not been raised here and you're, you're going through a whole rezoning of an area, possible rezoning in this vision. Think about it.
Charles, thank you. Charles Hibbert is next, followed by Teresa Bischoff.
I'm Charles Hibbert and I have a business on West 11th. I live actually in River Road area. I just wanted to bring up some things on the West 11th Parkway. First of all, the federal government is running out of loss. Our state is bankrupt. The city's running out of loss. LTD's got no money, but you want to go and spend a hundred million dollars. That's something that, if you want to spend a hundred million dollars, somebody needs to show us in that area. I lived right on Churchill for years and years and I can't see from West 11th that there's walking distance to any population. When you look at West 11th, the first population you get is on 18th or way down on Royal Street. Everything else is industrial area. And so I'm opposed to it just because of the cost, because somebody here mentioned that they're looking for the future for the kids and their grandkids. Well, I don't see a future for my kids and my grandkids if we're going to spend all this money unnecessarily without, it's obvious that LTD hasn't done a good job of contacting the West 11th people that live there. I know a lot, lot of people that lived there for 11 years up at Churchill. Everybody that I speak to are opposed to what they're trying to do down on West 11th. Somebody, last time, these people, they come up here and they, they supporting the bus service, but they're not willing to pay the price. Every time we pay employee taxes and that, the businesses are paying the price on taxes, the population's paying the price, the guys that aren't using the Parkway, I mean, using the bus service. And these people are saying that they're going to support the MX because it's more convenient. Well, how can it be more convenient when there's less stops and guys are going to walk further to get to the bus stops? It's just, it doesn't make sense. This thing, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, please, let's have some common sense here about spending our money. And people, there not, some person commented that the federal, that's federal money. Well, that's our money too. We're paying taxes to the federal government. Can't people understand that the federal government money is our taxpayers' dollars? That's what I'm concerned about, the future. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Teresa Bischoff is next, followed by Nicholas Garcia.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Teresa Bischoff with Arlene Company. In our Register Guard editorial last month, the council was advised to be cautious about our offer to sell land south of LCC for a park. The editorial suggests that since we filed for Chapter 11 reorganization, the city has leverage to negotiate a lower asking price. Actually, once we filed for Chapter 11, we can only sell land as authorized by a federal judge. Since time is critical, acting in good faith, city staff prepared a letter of intent to purchase 315 acres at a substantially discounted sale price. And that letter contained the price per acre and a map. All parties, banks, creditors, general public, were given an opportunity to tour the property and a right to file an objection. At the end of a 30-day period, there were no objections filed to the sale. So the price per acre, majority of the land was at 50 percent below appraised value to consider a further price reduction when you consider this item at a future date would generate the need to do a second public notice period and likely the banks would object. They want more money back, not less. The editorial also suggests that Arlene's latest proposal gives you the best hopes of getting our $600,000 donation. This is true. We are, we, we want to honor that pledge. The federal judge has granted us the authority to do so, consistent with the letter of intent. Again, the final sale agreement, should you decide to pursue this acquisition, needs to be substantially consistent with that letter that was circulated. Lastly, the editorial admonishes the council not to shortcut its normal guidelines for naming parks. Actually, the guidelines clearly give city staff the ability to refer naming decisions to you. This is not a shortcut. It is an, an option available to the staff and they've decided to take it. We believe the substantial financial donation, both in land and cash, meets the intent of the guidelines and we sincerely look forward to your work session on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Garcia is next, followed by Pat Farr.
Hi there. My name's Nick Garcia. I live at 37th and Kincaid Street. I'm a resident of Ward Two and I'm here to express my support for the MX West Eugene extension. I think it's critical that Eugene invest heavily in public transit so that we can remain a thriving community into the future. There's no way we're going to meet our greenhouse gas reduction targets if we don't invest in public transit. And I, one, one common concern is that there, there isn't a plan for how to pay for this, that the operating costs are not currently being covered. And I agree that that's true and I think that's terrible. And we need to find a way to pay for public transit because that's the only way we're going to succeed as a community in the future. I suggest, for example, a gas tax or a vehicle miles traveled tax as a way of both decreasing the incentive to drive and increasing the funding for public transit. The point is that it's a really important service and it's worth finding the money to pay for. One thing I would like to go to a couple of points that have been raised by the people who are opposed to the MX. One, somebody mentioned that traffic is good and I agree, people, and the traffic in terms of people moving through an area is good. A bus driver transit system would bring people through an area. Just people in cars is not the only type of good traffic. Second, the idea that it kills businesses. I would like to see any hard data on that. I don't, I don't know if there are any businesses that were killed on the other MX corridors. I think if you investigate transit corridors throughout the country, you'll find that they're generally good for business. Another is that we already have good public transportation. I think the fact that we still have, I think at least 80 percent of the people drive for most of their trips in this, in this town is, demonstrates that we do not in fact have good public transportation. If we did have good public transportation, the majority of people would be using it. And finally, the idea that, there's sort of a, the paradigm here is that transit is an unnecessary expense, it's fiscally irresponsible, whereas the sort of the status quo is the fiscally responsible option. And I think if you look at it, what, what pays for cars, people pay for cars. What pays for roads? The government pays for roads. All of these things are expenses. I think the average cost of owning a car and operating it is about $8,000 a year and that doesn't include paying for roads or all the external costs in terms of, in terms of health costs, environmental costs, people getting killed by cars. The automobile fatality rate is triple the homicide rate in this country. If that, if those numbers were reversed, political careers would be won and lost on it. So I think we need to invest in public transit and extend the MX to West Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Farr is next, followed by Annette Woodmark.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for listening to me this evening. Could you put me in the second round, please?
Not yet.
You know, there are so many controversial things that you consider as a city council. You've been listening to several of them tonight and that no matter what you decide, you're going to be divided on it and you're going to get vilified. Some of you more than others, but on just about any one issue, each one of you is going to get vilified by one side or the other. You can count on that. You're going to live with it. And who on earth would want to do your job? I have no idea. But you do it and thank you very much for it. But what I'm here to talk about is something that, you know, we can all agree on. Every now and then, you get an issue or a couple of issues that it's really hard to find somebody who disagrees. Unfortunately, the types of issues that I'm talking about are the most disturbing issues that we see in our community, the most disturbing issues in the society. And the ones I'm going to talk about very briefly tonight is hunger and shelter, two very, very important issues, particularly this time of the year when it's starting to get cold, starting to get wet and, and people are hungry and people are without shelter and some people die from those things. Now, we do a lot about it. Each of you, as I look around the podium, each of you does a lot about it. Mayor Pearson, before you were a mayor, your picture was on the cover of the Food for Lane County's flyers. And Councilor Brown, your company scans and gives thousands of dollars annually to Food for Lane County. So, Councilor Polling, I saw you just the other night at a large Food for Lane County event. You all do stuff for Food for Lane County. You all do stuff for housing and shelter. Food for Lane County is a very well-organized program. They, they gather food from all over the community, as you know. I'm not telling you something you don't know. And they do it very, very well. It's easy to, to work with Food for Lane County because there are so many different ways to do it and we all do and the challenge is going to be to continue to do that. The other side of it is shelter. Now, shelter, homelessness, people who don't have adequate place to live, many of them kids, don't have the same kind of organized structure that the hungry people in the community have, which is Food for Lane County. And, and right now, a small group is starting to form. They're going to be called, I believe, the Eugene Shelter Coalition. They're going to be beginning to address some of the issues that were addressed when I was on the city council previously by the, the Council Committee on Homelessness and Youth. And a large part of it is trying to get people to understand that programs are available, not necessarily reinventing the wheel, but getting all of the components that we have in the community, consolidating them and making certain that people have access. Now, two people that I know personally have had issues with shelter. One of them is a friend of mine who I served in the National Guard with. He and I were officers together, Major Tom Egan. You all know the name. Major Egan had plenty of resources. He lived on the street and he died on the street and he created a lot of attention.
Thank you.
I'll write you about the other person. It's really interesting.
Thank you. Annette Woodmark is next, followed by George Cole.
Hello, I'm Annette Woodmark and I live and I own property in rural West Eugene. And I support the West Eugene MX Project 100 percent. I actually ride, I take my car and I actually avoid West 11th Street because it is so packed with cars. And I go down West 18th and I take and park and I ride to the college every day on LTD. And every day, I go, why don't we have an MX like they have here? On the MX on the other side of town, it is packed every day. Over 25 years ago, I lived 40 miles from San Francisco and I traveled on BART, the Bay Area Rapid Transit, to San Francisco for half the money and time that it took me to drive there. And once in the city, I would receive a free transfer ride to all the transit lines, including the famous cable car system. LA, LA, California once had a mass transit line too, rail line, and which anyone could quickly commute through every part of the city, but the big three auto, American auto companies, Firestone Tires and several oil companies joined to purchase the rail lines and tore up the rails. The result today is gridlock. Look at the signers on West 11th. Most are businesses and many profit directly from the automobile industry. I noticed the travel, I noticed this traveling in my car, moving only 10 yards every five minutes during rush hour traffic. How many people have been stuck behind the bus that pulls in and out at every bus stop during rush hour? Imagine how different it would be with an MX line with its very own designated lane that doesn't interfere at all with the traffic flowing, bringing new customers to the area, especially once the fast rail line, which is, is already in the process of being planned from San, from Seattle to Eugene, which is very similar to the BART system. Lane County deserves the same kind of modern transit that other metropolitan areas had benefited for, from decades. Our system is 30 years behind the time. BART was created in 1950s. It passed. In 1973, it opened. It paid for itself. It paid for itself. Everybody then, at that time, it only passed by 60%. It had to have 60%. It passed by 61%. It only took in, the first month they ran, they had three cars on the train. They had to immediately expand to nine cars because there were so many people that were riding the train. Within three months, they had 2,000 riders on that system. It has to be fast, it has to be cheap, it has to be reliable. Going down West 11th from one in a town to the other, that is, makes perfect sense.
Thank you. George Cole is next, followed by Brianna Orr.
My name is George Cole. 2760 West 11th Avenue. In case you've forgotten, I was born on Willamette Street in 1936, class of 54 Eugene High School. I've been involved in a business on West 11th for 50 years. I have property in both Chris Pryor and Andrea Ortiz's district and I appreciate them listening to us. I think we're dealing with a ideological divide in this situation. I am, I'm for no build. I'm not anonymous. I think there's good reason to not build at this time. It takes more than three minutes to go through the reasons. You can explain anything with numbers. I'd just like to ask you a couple of questions. Do we really have to have earned dollars to have appropriated dollars? And if that's true, can appropriated dollars succeed without earning dollars? So, why is West 11th in such a negative view of so many people? There are people on the council and people in these committees that are advising the council on EMX that say that West 11th is strip mall type and it's ugly and it needs to be beautified. Well, we can always stand more beauty as we get older. And the example of favorable development following MX is questionable. There's already been testimony tonight about downtown. So, I want to know if the EMX issue is really an issue for rezoning? And where are these types of businesses on West 11th going to locate? And I don't mean to be sarcastic, but are you going to appropriate for another bridge and are we going to have an exclusion zone around West 11th and the bridge to get us across the river where the other services now have gone because they have been regulated and taxed out of town? Thank you.
Brianna Orr is next, followed by Pam. And Pam, I'm going to, looks like Jongward or something, but I'm not sure. I'm probably murdering that name. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Brianna, Eugene resident, Ward 3. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to ask you to provide us with options. We are a community, obviously, of diverse interests, desires and needs. Our transportation options should be as diverse as we are. I do not doubt that many Eugenians prefer to drive and I will continue to do so along West 11th. We are not closing down West 11th. We are just providing a different type of transportation option for people who cannot drive or prefer not to. MX is a unique situation or solution, excuse me, to the public transportation needs of Eugene Springfield. Bus rapid transit carries more people than regular buses and provides a more consistent time schedule, thus attracting more people even to public transit. MX is more cost-effective than regular LTD buses in the operation and at a time when transit funding across the country is falling and has an uncertain future, we need to invest in cost-effective strategies for mass transit. I also want to note that if we do not take this money from the federal government, then some other city will. So, I see that we should seize this opportunity and invest it in our community. The University of Oregon relies on mass transit and active transportation heavily. If you know one thing about campus, it is probably that you don't like to drive there or park there. It is a large destination, obviously, and will only become larger with the opening of Matthew Knight Court. The seating capacity is 12,000 people. Our students, visitors and event attendees need access to convenient, reliable public transportation. I believe that this project will be, will bring much-needed connections to residents, businesses and other destinations. It will go a long way in completing the bus, the progressive bus rapid transit network we would like to see in our community. I urge you to support MX, an option that makes Eugene a more livable place for all residents.
Thank you. Pam, you're next, followed by Drew Saris.
Hi. My name is Pam Jongward and I am from Eugene, born and raised. And my parents and grandparents all lived here. My dad worked really hard to leave, his dream was to leave us some property. He was a, in real estate, commercial real estate. He, his dream was to leave us some property. He died not quite two years ago and a few years ago, I went to, went to help him with manage his properties. One of them is located on 11th and Chambers, which has been in our family for probably close to 40 years. It is vacant right now. We cleaned it up in January and waiting for the right tenant to get in there. First part of August or the, found out about, got a letter from LTD concerning what they had proposed to do. And I am concerned about what I'm going to do with that property they want to take. If, if their plan goes through, they're going to take a big piece of it. It, it'll, it's already hard to get in and out of there. The, the other property is one on, out further West 11th and one on where the Midas Muffler Shop is and they have short-term leases. And I don't know whether they're going to want to continue on in those properties now. I've seen a drop in the tenants that we've had in the past, over the last few years, two, couple of years. We, we've lost about 10 tenants because of the economy. We've reduced rents for people so they can stay in business. And so, I'm concerned about the impact that it has on the tenants that have had to move home or left. And, and a lot of these people were in these buildings for, and spaces for 15 years or longer. And so, the money is, the impact it's going to have on everybody out there is huge. It's not just taking of the property, it's the, the businesses out there. And, and they are mainly automotive, restaurants, places where most of the services are car-related or you need a car to, to get things from Home Depot. And it seems to me that there could be a better way to serve people and I'm not exactly sure how or where. And yet, it, it seems like at this time, it, it just seems like it's going to be a huge amount of money for everybody to pay.
Thank you. Drew Saris is next, followed by Tom Schwetz.
Thanks for listening to everybody here tonight. I know there's been a lot of people, so thank you. I spoke a few weeks ago on the, oh, sorry. Thank you. My name's Drew Saris. I'm a resident of Ward 1. I spoke a few weeks ago on the MX issue because I, I feel really passionate about it and the issues it creates, along with the future impact on a wide array of people in the Eugene community. I can't speak tonight for those who do not have the ability to be here. However, there are many people that, for a variety of reasons, do not have access to a car or cannot afford a car or insurance or do not even have the ability to drive a car. In addition, by not responding to the pressing transportation concerns on West 11th now, we put the future of West Eugene at risk. Eugene is growing and if we wait to expand the MX and other transportation, public transportation services, costs for building will rise until we are finally forced to respond to the problem of access to West Eugene for the vast majority of Eugene residents. We, as a community, have the chance to save millions by planning ahead instead of waiting. Thank you for listening tonight and taking Eugene's current and future needs into account. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom Schwetz is next, followed by Larry Reed.
Mayor Piercy, council members, good evening. My name is Tom Schwetz. I'm the Planning and Development Director for Lane Transit District. The address is 3500 East 17th Avenue in Glenwood and I'm a resident of Ward 1. What I have to say is going to make more sense if you can insert it in front of what Andy said, so I'll just go with that. We're seeing the public forum that you hold becoming an important part of the conversation that the community is having about the West Eugene MX Extension Project. Our work sessions with you on this project are very important in that they allow us to go into more detail and have an interactive discussion about specific issues. However, they have typically taken place every few months and aren't really part of the community's conversation as it's happening. And for that reason, we want to be part of this conversation. Our intent isn't necessarily to address issues you might hear in testimony during a specific public forum, though we're obviously here if you have any questions. Our objective in participating in the forum is to take the opportunity to provide information on issues we've heard raised in the community's conversation with the hope that this effort can deepen the community's understanding on this critical topic. With that, I'd like to announce that the Alternatives Analysis Report has finally been released by the Federal Transit Administration. We are currently in the process of having it printed and expect to have it available online, in libraries and other points of distribution by this Thursday. In conjunction with the release of this document, we are beginning to schedule a series of public workshops to help familiarize people with the report. And to further assist the public in accessing the analysis, we've also prepared an executive summary, which is much shorter than the 500-page Alternatives Analysis and should provide a broader base of access by the public. There are many economic, environmental and community benefits that will result from this project, but I'd like to leave you with three reasons you should support a Western Extension of MX. First, we need to be proactive in planning today for our future. The best time to plant a tree that we need today was 20 years ago. We need to continue to be innovative in addressing climate change, congestion and air quality in our community. MX is part of the solution. And finally, our community deserves high-quality transit for those who choose transit and for those who rely on it. Thanks.
Our last person to come up to the public forum this evening is Larry Reed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to thank you and the city council mayor, especially the city manager for the Eugene Envision process. Some people may think that we don't need any further land use planning. Some of those people may fear change. They want to maintain the status quo, which, at least in my point of view, never was a very good way to run a business, let alone a community. And it's not turned out, if they continue with that, to be very, be very helpful. Some examples of these kinds of things happened in the 1880s in Eugene when the railroad first came through. There was a lot of people didn't want a noisy, smelly train and even people today don't want a smelly, noisy train. But it happened and the community grew from about 2,000 to about 20,000 in the space of just a few years. Similar thing happened when I-5 went through. There was objection about the location and where it ran or whether the I-5 was even needed. Community was perfect. Those continued on and we built those facilities. And Eugene is going to continue to grow. Things are going to change and we need to accommodate that growth. You have to have the right infrastructure. You have to have water, sewer, transportation system to accommodate that growth. If you don't, then in the future, people are going to say, look at all that congestion. Look at all that, what it's caused. Well, it's not the, that's not the culprit. That's the result of poor planning. With proper planning, we can accommodate the growth that's going to happen whether we like it or not. So, and so I encourage everybody to take part in the Envision Eugene process and, because we need that input to, to bring forward and properly plan for interstructure, which involves the West Eugene, West Eugene Avenue and those kinds of things. We need to balance land use. We've done a good job so far in, in open space and the library and the public sewer treatment plant. We've done a good process for that growth, but we need to get our transportation system and land use planning caught up with that. And again, I commend you for the vision, for figuring out a way to get the city involved in the, in the Envision planning process. Thank you.
Thank you. Close the public forum and ask council for comments. Ready? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for coming down and talking about the MX, as well as the other issues too, but primarily MX tonight. And I think that the business people on West 11th and 6th and 7th have made some very compelling arguments. I think that their criticisms have been very thoughtful. I share some of those. I'm not particularly convinced yet that for the need for the BRT, I think that we can have, it's possible that we could have transportation improvements without BRT. I'm trying to keep an open mind, but so far, I have to say, I haven't seen a compelling argument. So, I'm really looking forward to the release of the report on Thursday and I'd like to suggest, Tom and Andy, if, if council could have a copy of the complete, so the whole 500-page, the whole enchilada, like to sit, you know, so we can thumb through all that and then, and then I advise you to distribute the, the summary as widely as possible too, so, so people can, you know, and I mean, you know, you'll have a copy of the big one at your headquarters too, but that's kind of hard for some people to get to. So, it'd be good to have one down here. I may change my mind. I actually haven't made up my mind. I don't want to give that impression, but I'm not. I haven't made up my mind. I just know that, I've been doing some reading on transit-oriented development the last, since I got on council, the last two years. And BRT and transit-oriented development are not necessarily the same thing. You can have transit-oriented development without BRT, without the hard lanes. So, I'm just thinking that there may be a way to make transportation improvements without, without BRT. Guess that's all I want to say. Thank you.
I too want to thank everyone for coming this evening and really expressing and very well-spoken about their, their perspectives and how they, the way that they look at this very challenging issue. I guess I want to reiterate because I feel like every time we talk about this, I need to say this, that 10 years ago, we started down this road, said that we were, we wanted to have a bus rapid transit system and in fact, we based it on a very successful one in Bogota, I believe it is. And in fact, just this last week, people came from all over the country to a Rail Evolution Conference in Portland. A whole lot of them came right down here to Eugene to look at MX as one of the things that they think is a shining example for the whole country about how you build a mass transit system that is on a scale for a small to medium-sized community and one that is efficient and for a fraction of the cost of, say, light rail or another kind of mass transit system. So, this is a very innovative, long-term, forward-thinking that our community has already said we support it and have been saying we support it for 10 years as a way to build a full transportation system, which includes cars, bikes, good pedestrian movement, transit system, rail, all of those different parts that have to fit together so that everybody can move well today and move into the future. So, for me, I, I want that transit system and I care deeply about your businesses. So, I want to find a way for us to find a way to do what we need to do for our community, for you and for the mobility of our entire community and the future of this community. Counselor Ortiz.
You mean, nobody else is in front of me, Mayor?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. Thank you all for coming out. I really do appreciate people coming and sharing their opinions with us. Part of being an elected official, that we get to listen to people up here. I was told it was the best show in town, my first council meeting, and I've never disagreed with that statement, because I really do like people's candid and honesty. The thing about the bus rapid transit is, if you look at it kind of globally, versus light rail versus trolley, it definitely is the cheaper of the three. If you're not, if you're not vested in public transportation, then you're never going to get there. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. You know, you can't talk people into what they don't believe in. I just came back from Cleveland, I had the opportunity to go at, with some information from LTD, I was able to go at a conference that was supported by NYU, and I got to meet the mayor of Bogota, and I sent a little email, and actually, I think I'll send it to you all on the website, MyMoneyMyTransit, I'll try and send it to you, and anybody else who's interested. And it was really kind of interesting, you know, Bogota versus Cleveland. In Bogota, they basically, you know, do eminent domain, you don't question the government, they tell you to move, you've moved. But they have 3 million people in that community, and they move people around pretty good. In Cleveland, I was really impressed, and I know we're not Cleveland, I know we're not New York, I know we're not, you know, Paris and Tokyo, but I was really impressed with, it took them 10 years to get through their process, it wasn't overnight. It took a lot of community support. Everybody had to be at the table to make it successful, and I think that, and I, and I just, just the 48 hours that I spent there, I could see where the value of it is, because, you know, when you talk about impacting the quality of life for a whole community, I think is, I know people, it's really personal, especially to the business owners, but when you think of it, and, you know, like how we're supposed to see it as elected officials to look at the whole picture, it makes sense to me, because it just seems like, you know, there was a lot of different changes that were able to happen because of the conversations that were happening at the table around this project. Not so much that those community members came forward and said, "We want to work on X, Y, and Z," it was the fact that they were all in the same room, and everybody was just kind of having these big conversations about how it was going to affect them, and what, and every community had a stake, in every stakeholder in the community, their issues were addressed. And I'm not saying that we're going to support, that I have eight votes to go down West Eleventh, but if we do, I can, I'll commit myself to making sure that the businesses there stay as viable as possible with the economy. There was a lot of things that I heard from them, that the Transit District did, as far as making it less painful for the business owners, so, but like I said, I don't know where my peers are, I've already spoken to my support for it, but I just wanted to say that, and I'll send you guys the link, the email.
Counselor Poling.
I just appreciate everybody's comments this evening. There were a couple of comments, though, that raised some concerns with me, and I don't know where they're coming from, but if any of my fellow councilors thinks that this is, the EMX issue is a rezoning issue, would you at least acknowledge that, raise your hand or something? I don't know who started that urban legend, but let me tell you, that's not the issue. The issue is, do we build, or do we not build? If we build, what route do we take? So whoever started the rezoning issue story, knock it off. That's, you know, the way these stories start in the community, and it just grows from there. So I'm just a little concerned about that. And if somebody's going to come up and quote something that one of us has said in a subcommittee meeting, or in a board or commission, make sure you identify who it is, because to my knowledge, I've never described West Eleventh a strip mall type and ugly. I've got my own opinions of West Eleventh, but I don't think I've ever used those words. And I, I just think if you're going to make accusations, make sure you point to the person that made that comment, and when it was made. You know, at this point, I'm keeping an open mind, I too am looking forward to the 500 pages coming out. I doubt if I'll be able to get through all of it, but I'm going to try to. And, you know, I was on a stakeholder group that, when I first started, I really wanted the project to work, and at the end of it, I had to say, "No, it's not going to work." So, you know, I can go into, go into any, any topic, I look at both sides, and I, when all the, when all the information is finally presented to me, then I'll make my decision based on that information.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I believe very strongly in transit, but it isn't a question of transit or no transit. I believe in buses. I've never, never been convinced that MX or BRT, it used to be called BRT, is the solution. I think we need bus routes all over the city, connecting bus routes, we need, everybody should be able to use a bus, or preferably a train or, or street. This city used to have streetcars, you probably know that. And I, at any rate, I've never been convinced, and if we're going to have another route, I think it should be on Sixth and Seventh, that's, that's what I voted, I didn't vote for this Eleventh in the beginning, and I don't think it's a good choice. But I also have not decided for sure how I will, I haven't totally made up my mind, but I do think that what we need is, and I know there's federal money, but I wish we would ask for federal money to help us expand bus service. There are places that are having their routes cut, there are places that can't ride a bus, where people can't ride a bus at all, and they really need to. It is, it is an important part of economic development, actually. If they, if people can't get out, if they don't have a car, they can't ride a bus to look for a job, they can't ride a bus to go to work, then they are very handicapped. And I think that what we should concentrate on, and I know the money's not available for that, but I think what we should concentrate on is transit available to everyone. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that we actually have gone to Washington and lobbied heavily for money for operations dollars. It's just that the federal government, up until this time, does not provide dollars for operations, they provide dollars for construction.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you to everybody who came. I appreciate the time you take to come out and make sure we understand all sides of this as thoroughly as possible, and some of you many times, to make sure we hear it. I appreciate it very much. Pat, Coalition for Shelter, I would like to participate if we could talk about that some more. I'll tell you, I've had a lot of people from different sides of this MX discussion talk with me about this, and some board members from LTD that I respect very much have spoken with me about it. I still remain in a place where I want to be open, and I very much want to be better educated than I am right now. But at the moment, I still find myself troubled by a couple parts of this, the capacity for businesses to be condemned, what I think is an overburdensome effect on individual businesses. And while I agree with Counselor Ortiz that our job is to look and take into account the big picture, I think governments were instituted among men to protect the rights of the individual, and I'm pretty sure there's a document or two that says that. And so, the individual business owners who are treated disproportionately for a value that all of us share, to have some system that might be better, we shouldn't take it out on, on individuals and make them pay a disproportionate share for that value that all of us have, and that concerns me a lot, so I'm going to want to learn more about what can be done in that regard before I could support it. There are a couple of other issues, but I'm, like I said, I want to remain open, and I want to remain open to being better educated on it, and I, and I need to be, to go along at this point, so, thank you.
Counselor Brown.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to respond to Counselor Poling's question about, you know, who's making these statements. I didn't hear a state, negative statement about the business of West Eleventh, I read a couple of them, they were anonymous, they were part of the Envision Eugene Group's collective statements, and there basically was, "Well, my worst fear would be that Wesley Levenths stays ugly, and car-oriented, and strip malls." And another one was very similar, so yes, there, but they were collective statements, so there's no telling who actually made them. This is a group of about 60 people that's meeting to discuss the thing about the urban growth boundary, but there's been lots of discussion about transportation issues too. And so, yes, I did read a couple of comments, but I don't know who made them. I can show it to you, I will, I have the copy.
Well, the discussion continues, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you all. It's a consent calendar, Council President.
Move to approve those items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Could you please vote? Seven in favor. Is Counselor Solomon on the line?
Yeah, I vote yeah.
All right, eight in favor and none at opposition. Boy, you really hang in there, thank you. Okay, that passes. Next item is an action item, an ordinance concerning personal property sale procedures. City Manager, you want to explain that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Council is being asked to take. The Council is being asked to take action on an ordinance amending Eugene Code 2.835, personal property sale procedures preceding sale. The amendment is necessary to update the Eugene Code to reflect Oregon revised statutes regarding the posting and publishing of found property prior to its sale. If adopted, the ordinance will reduce by 75% the cost incurred by the city in publishing the lists of property prior to sale. Property would be held by the city for 60 days instead of 30 days before going to public auction or disposal.
Okay, you going to put the motion on the table?
Happy to. Mayor, move to adopt Council Bill 5035, an ordinance amending Section 2.835, personal property sale procedures of the Eugene Code, comma, 1971.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Brown.
Thanks, I just have a quick question. So basically, we're going to be cutting the number of times this is, this is posted in the newspaper, to save money, which I think is a great idea. But I'm just wondering, so who answers these ads? People are cruising around, and they're looking at ads, and they're looking for good deals on confiscated property, so if we're only going to go to one notice now instead of four notices, is it, was there any thought to, like, posting these ads, like, on a certain date, so you don't have to, like, continually comb through all of the ads, like maybe the every first of the month, or every 15th of the month, boom, here's the property posting, because we're only going to do it once, so use this date to look for it, that's when they get posted? Is that a possibility? Because, because now they're not going to be four postings, they're just going to, you're just going to shoot down to one.
Yeah.
Wondering if there was any thought given to that idea.
Yeah, that definitely is a possibility. We get very few responses from the newspaper postings. We do post in public places, in three different locations around the city, as part of the ad. That particular process happens after, used to be 30, now will be 60 days of doing due diligence and locating the owners. We would much prefer to return it to people, but that's, that's a good idea, and would be happy to, happy to look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I think we're ready to vote on that. Would you please vote?
Yes.
Yes, from, from Counselor Solomon, and there's seven yeses here, that makes eight yeses, it passes, and with that, we finish the business of the evening. Thank you very much.